The regularly scheduled zoning board of appeals meeting in Plymouth Town Hall, America's hometown, by the way, I think I mentioned that once before. Tonight, we only have one case and it was continued. It's a 40B and before we get into too much of it, I'm going to ask our town attorney, Ms. Murray, to explain kind of what our abilities are, what the town's responsibilities are, and what the mandate of the state is. So if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to sort of refresh everyone's memories, this particular site has some history, obviously, where there was a prior approval for a 55-plus project. And, you know, I understand that it went through an appeal process. And at some point, the prior owner has got the property under agreement, or has sold it, or will sell it, to our new entity here, Plymouth Canso. And you might also recall that as part of that prior 55-plus agreement, that, you know, water in this area of Plymouth has been a concern for a number of years. And we've been getting lots of large developments down there with a demand for water. So one of the requirements for that prior approval was that Claremont, at the time, was going to, had agreed to design and construct a water booster station at a site to be determined. Now that we've had the appeals and now that the property has been sold, or will be sold to the new applicant, there's been a change of direction, where now there is no longer a 55-plus development that's proposed. Instead, you have a comprehensive permit under 40B. And I know that's something that most of these board members and folks are familiar with, but essentially, 40B is the state mechanism to create affordable housing. And it's a pretty powerful statute, particularly from a developer's perspective, because it allows a developer to come into a local board and get all of their permits through one-stop shopping right here, the zoning board of appeals, unlike any other type of application you will ever consider. But also, 40B is powerful in the sense that it allows, essentially, for a complete override of zoning. Again, going through the zoning board of appeals to grant those waivers, but when you consider the work that's usually before a zoning board, a variance, and requiring, you know, a supermajority vote, or special permits, and that sort of thing, this is different. You know, this only requires a majority vote of the board. And the state's emphasis is on a housing crisis and the need to create more and more affordable housing. So the standard that you're judging everything by, whether it's the waivers or the ultimate decision here, is whether or not you have some sort of local need, you know, a local rule, a regulation, that is rooted in some sort of public health or safety concern, and whether that particular local concern outweighs the need for regional affordable housing. And when you're dealing with the states and the context of, we're in a housing crisis, I don't think I have to tell this board that it's a pretty high threshold for a local board of appeals to get passed. And anyone who is a student of reading any of the decisions that come out of the Housing Appeals Committee at the state level, they typically are not favorable to cities and towns. They are much more favorable to developers, because the idea is, we want to create more housing. But that said, the new developer did come in and had some meetings with the town manager and others in administration about the prior agreement relative to that water booster station. And a new memorandum of agreement was reached, so the developer would still agree to honor that prior commitment. There have been a couple of other things that I know the Department of, the planning director in particular, has had some conversations about some things that they would like to see in terms of, you know, incorporated into the project. And I've got a very short list, but from what I understand, most have all been agreed to. So when we reach that point, those would be things that I would obviously incorporate into a draft decision or conditions for the board to consider. The applicants' counsel and I have taken a first shot at drafting a decision based on the Oasis Project decision that we did a few years back. It is very much in very preliminary stage, because obviously, you haven't had much conversation yet about this particular project. So from what I understand, I think the applicants prepared to sort of provide an update of things this evening. I know their, one of their consultants, Bowler, has prepared a revised report that, and Denise can, or Jason can correct me if I'm wrong, but Beals and Thomas, our peer review consultant, has not yet commented on the latest Bowler report. So I think that in and of itself tends to suggest that we're going to be here for at least one more evening, if not two, because you obviously want to get that feedback from your peer review consultant. The other thing to remind the board is that you haven't yet had public comment, so we have to remember to incorporate that. And depending upon how this evening goes, I did suggest to the applicant that perhaps, if time allows, we should look at waivers, because I know they've submitted their request for waivers, but there really hasn't been any overview yet of what the specifics are or why the waivers are needed, so that this board can ultimately make an informed decision on all of that. So with that, I hand it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Okay. Okay, so, folks, you've kind of heard our town attorney and where we stand and how things are laid out. And this evening, everyone will get a chance to speak about the project. Right now, I want to remind everybody who is seated on this case, and it is Mr. Leary, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Connor, Mr. Wallace, and myself. And with that, I will ask, who is presenting and would they please come to the microphone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Gillespie from Avalon Bay Communities. And I'm going to be brief tonight and turn it over to our technical team, who are going to go through feedback that we went through over the last month. It's been a very busy month as related to the project. In our first presentation last month, you know, we've received some comments from the board. We also received technical comments from the peer reviewer, DPW, and the fire department. And we've responded to all of those letters and comments in whole. And we made changes to our plans in response to those comments. A lot of them were very, very good comments, and we revised the plans, and that's the, those are the plans that have been resubmitted to the town. We also redeveloped some of the architectural details. There were comments last time about some of the architecture and how we could. So part of tonight's presentation is about particularly the top of the building, the height of that parapet and building height. That was a question that came up last time, so we're fully prepared to talk about that tonight. The other thing that's happened last month is last Monday, we met with the neighbors from Sawyer's Reach. We went to their clubhouse and had an informal neighborly presentation, and we stood and spent a great deal of time going through the project and answering any questions that were out there. I'm sure some of the members of the Sawyer's Reach community will speak tonight, but we were happy to be there, given that, you know, as a long-term owner of these communities, we're going to be their neighbor for the long term. So to build that relationship, start to build that relationship now is important to us. And those are really the overall things that have happened in the last month. And with that, we're going to go through three major topics today. One would be just a highlight of the changes that were made to the plans related to the peer review comments that came back. Second is going to be an overview of the landscaping, landscape architecture. Our landscape architect couldn't be here last time, so he's going to do a presentation on that. And then our architect is going to stand up and talk about, in response to some of the comments last time about building height, parapets, and some of the detailing on the building, he has several views of the building, so you can get an idea of what's proposed. All right. So with that, I'm going to steer it over to Steve Materano from Bowler Engineering. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. No, great, thank you. But again, Steve Materano from Bowler, our 45 Franklin Street in Boston, civil engineering consultant for the project. As we heard, we've had some comment letters that came out, as well as conversation at the first hearing. So basically, what we've done is, we've provided those responses, and as we heard, we, those are still under review. But we had three major letters that we were responding to. One was from the Department of Public Works, focused on the engineering items. The independent peer review from Beals and Thomas, looking at civil engineering with a heavy focus on the stormwater component. And then the fire department, Plymouth Fire Department, responding, talking about access around the site, some items to look at site-wise, and then some items for future consideration as the building gets designed with sprinkler systems and their command center. So I'm not going to go through the entire bullet-by-bullet list on those responses. I think it's better to get their responses, give them a chance to respond to our comments. But I wanted to hit, really, the major points that I think came out of either this conversation last time or those comment letters. So one of the bigger changes site plan-wise, I think that we've made, or two of them, is the first couple bullets here. There was a lot of, the initial plan had some compact spaces at eight-and-a-half-foot width. We've revised it to eliminate all the eight-and-a-half-foot spaces, so all spaces are nine. And we've got a good amount that are ten, so we have 162 surface spaces that are now 10 feet wide. We have another 40 in the garages that are also at least 10 feet wide. So a little over 200 spaces at 10 feet wide, and then the remainder of the spaces are nine feet, which we think are a good mix between folks with larger vehicles could request the larger spaces, and they'll be assigned spaces. So there's an opportunity for folks with larger vehicles to get an assigned wider space. And then the majority of vehicles are more than comfortable in a nine-foot space, so we thought this was a nice mix, especially with the assignment of the spaces. We've also increased the, all drive aisles on the property were 24 feet, we've widened them to 25 to be consistent with Plymouth. That also was very helpful to the fire department, make it a little more comfortable as they maneuver their large aerial ladder truck through the site. So that helps in a couple ways, and that's in the site plan you have today. Couple technical things, but they were very important, mostly to the DPW. They wanted another protective measure, a shut-off valve, so we can disconnect our drain system from the detention basin. So there is a, we've installed these cutoff valves that can manually be closed in case there was ever a spill or some issue on-site, and we need to shut our system off to protect the detention basin, and more importantly, protect downstream groundwater from getting contaminated. So very important, safety. So, very important, um, safety feature. In addition, the, the site already had two levels of containment, and this is a third level. So, really, um, we think it's a, it's a nice add and really beefs up, uh, the protection of, of the, the downstream receiving waters. Um, the next one is sort of, again, a nice protective measure, some monitoring wells that the, the DPW had asked for. Um, they wanted to, to just have the ability to make sure, uh, there's not unintended contamination either happening in or around the area, so an ability to check that, uh, going, uh, forward. So, and there will be, the final locations will be agreed with DPW as the project advances, and, and detail the, uh, the monitoring and the submission, probably annual, uh, submission of that data. Uh, and then, and I apologize for the, the throat loss and jerk. Somehow, when it's ninety degrees, I caught a cold, um, which is, uh, I don't know how that happened, but it did. Um, so, uh, existing, the, the next feature is a stormwater feature. This came up, uh, through the peer reviewer and DPW. Um, the, the, there's a four bay as part of the treatment train, so before it get, the water gets down to the detention basin, the four bay apparently has been doing its job because it's filled up with some sediment. Um, it's due to be cleaned. Uh, the project has agreed, uh, as we go forward, to, to clean that out, get it back to good operating order, uh, and full-volume capacity to make sure it's doing its, uh, water treatment job. Um, and then, uh, one more Fire Department asked was to look at, and we've got a graphic on the next slide, so to, to look at how, um, the vehicle, their, their largest vehicle can get around the site, make sure they don't have to back up, and they can drive clockwise or counterclockwise around the site, uh, as well as some of those building comments that I, I referred to, making sure sprinkler systems will be NFBA compliant, um, and local, um, town compliant, as well as far as access to, uh, their connection points and access to the main entrances to the building. Um, and then really quickly, this is, the, the, the blue is the path for the fire truck. It shows the fire trucking go clockwise or counterclockwise and make it, uh, completely around the building, um, which they were looking for, and they were happy, uh, to see that this worked with their largest truck. Um, happy to answer any questions, or we can continue through the presentation. I'll pass it over, um, to, to Ben to walk you through the landscape components.
Hold on a second. Yes, Michael?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for you. Was, one is, um, so, I'm glad to see the, the, uh, monitoring wells, because that was one of my questions. It wasn't one in, you know, so, that's important. The other thing, though, is, okay, so when you widen the, uh, travel way down the middle by the four or so, that didn't diminish, because you don't have, like, you've got the ten by, but you don't have, and the nine, but you don't say by what? You didn't cut down the eighteen foot, did you?
We did not.
Okay. Um, that was another question. Um, and then there was, I noticed there was also two, um, Fire Department analysises there that you gave us, and planned, I think it was one and two. Was that because you widened the, the center spaces and, and made, and had a second plan? Why was there two of them in there? I didn't...
I think it was, it was purely just to, to, to demonstrate to the Fire Department how they can move their vehicles around.
Right.
The twenty-five feet just made them more comfortable. They worked with the twenty-four, but we heard the request for twenty-five-foot lanes, and that, that kind of, uh, worked to satisfy the comments here, as well as it just makes it more comfortable for the Fire Department. And we were just demonstrating a few different maneuvers. There was a, there was a passenger car, uh, maneuver in there as well, that was a, a Beals and Thomas comment on one of the garages.
Yeah.
So, just a few additional, this is just one of the, of the three.
Yeah, I was just curious if, whether that was the difference, because I was trying to figure out why there was two of them, and I, you know, must have been the space in the middle, but...
Nope, just trying to show different ways that they can maneuver around.
All right. Peter?
Uh, just one, I caught the two-hundred spaces at ten feet.
There's a hundred and sixty-two surface spaces, and then the forty garages.
Okay, what, how many nines?
Uh, no, that's the math. Um, so it's four hundred, uh, four-hundred-and-sixty-five total.
Really?
So, so...
Four?
Four eighty-five total. All right, so it's two oh two. So, it's two-hundred-and-eighty-three nine-foot spaces.
Two-hundred-and-eighty-three or nine. Okay, thank you.
You got anything?
I'm good for now.
Done? Okay. All right. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Ben LaFrance with Hock Design. We're the landscape architects on the project. Um, our office is, uh, just down Route Three in Sagamore. Um, so, the landscape plan defines the property, uh, creates a setting for the residents, and provides planted buffers at the property perimeter. Um, the plan consists of eighty-six shade trees, eighty-five conifer evergreens, and over sixteen-hundred, uh, low to medium-height shrubs and, and perennials, uh, consisting of drought-tolerant hardy species, um, many of which are native species or are shown on your, um, plant list guidelines and recommendations, uh, with your town. Um, to dive into the plan a little bit, uh, we'll start at the perimeter of the property and work our way inbound, uh, starting at the southern property line here, uh, that we share with our neighbors, uh, Sawyer's Reach, which is in this area here. Uh, we have planted a, a buffer consisting of mixed evergreens, of green giant arbivites, white pines, and white spruces. Those will be planted at a seven-to-eight foot height. Uh, we also have some red maples in there and some red oaks, uh, shade trees to get some canopy in there and some shade. Uh, those will be planted at a three-to-three-and-a-half-inch caliper size. Um, they'll probably go in, that caliper equals about, I would say, a fifteen-foot height tree, fifteen to twenty feet, depending on the growing conditions of that tree. Uh, and then those are supplemented with low shrubs, uh, along the back of the garage, and, uh, underneath the shade trees of, uh, shrubs consisting of bayberry, uh, there's some beech plum in there, as well as some switchgrass. So, a layered effect in there, um, a lot of evergreens in there to provide separation between the properties, and also provide some screening, uh, views from, uh, our butters, Sawyer's Reach, and, uh, our building. Uh, moving along to Colony Place here, uh, more towards our entrance, uh, we've, um, planted that with, uh, many shrubs, uh, low-growing shrubs, both in the evergreen and deciduous categories. Uh, we have also included some shade trees and evergreens in there. Uh, that really announces our entrance to the site, and it also provides a little bit of separation between Colony Place and our parking areas. Um, so it won't just look like a mass of, of asphalt paving. Get some nice landscape and some nice separation between the road and our parking. Uh, we have also continued that theme of evergreen plantings, um, and shrubs, uh, along our western property line that abuts the car dealership, um, again, keeping with those same plant material types, uh, green giant arbivites, uh, there's some white pine in there, some of the red maples again, and then, uh, shrubs of viburnums and bayberries. Uh, moving, uh, inbound to the site, uh, we've got several islands in the parking lot to help break up the massing of the asphalt. Those contain some, uh, shade trees in there, and are underplanted with, uh, various shrub types of inkberry, potentilla, uh, many native species. There's also some crinkled hair grass, uh, in those parking islands. Uh, along our buildings, uh, columnar shade trees are proposed, um, excuse me, are proposed. Those will help to break up the building facade, uh, but not only do that, but also provide some shade for our residents, uh, within their units. Um, those are supplemented on the ground plane with low-to-medium-height shrubs, um, creating interest on the ground plane for our residents and visitors alike. Um, and then as we move into the courtyard, uh, in the middle here, uh, you can see we've got a very nice, interesting shape, uh, to the sidewalks there. That provides good connectivity, um, between the parking lot and the building entries within the courtyard, and also provides good interconnectivity between, um, both of the buildings, uh, and their access points into that courtyard. And then also, that provides good access to the center of the courtyard. That's really the heart of our, our project here. Uh, the middle of the courtyard is where we have all of our resident amenities. Um, I know Ed spoke last meeting about some of those amenities. Um, we have some grilling spaces out there, we have some conversational seating spaces, um, and we also have a nice, uh, game lawn out there, place for, uh, kids to, you know, kick a ball, throw a baseball around, um, or something like a cornhole tournament for our residents, um, really multi-purpose turf area in there. Then there's also a small, um, play space, uh, for, uh, the young kids, uh, that are going to live here. Um, we've really centered those spaces in the courtyard. They're really right in the middle of the courtyard, and we've done that for a few reasons. Um, number one, it's just a really nice center space. It, it provides good access points to the building. It's, it's right in the middle, easy to get it, get to, uh, those spaces quickly out of doors. Um, secondly, by moving it into the center, it gets those uses away from our residential units in the building, so the noise is kind of more in the middle, instead of next to anybody in particular unit. Um, and then lastly, it also takes the best advantage of, um, of the sun space that's occurring, uh, in there. I know at your last meeting, um, you spoke about the shade studies and, and some of the solar effects, uh, of the buildings on the property. Uh, TAT provided this solar analysis, uh, that's now on the screen here. As you can see, on the left, uh, those are more of the shoulder season months, um, kind of the early springtime, when we're all emerging from our cocoons in our houses, uh, going out there. You could see that's got, uh, almost, uh, all of our amenity spaces in sun, and that's in March, um, and April, and then the bottom is more on the early fall side. You can see that that contains quite a bit of sunlight there. Uh, on the right side is kind of the opposite end of, of the spectrum, the top right being the summer month, where most all of this courtyard is, uh, in sun for most all of the day, uh, more than twelve hours a day. Uh, and then on the bottom, right in the midst of winter, when we're all inside, uh, keeping warm, you can see that's got the least amount of sun, but still, there's still quite a bit of, um, daylight sun in that upper right-hand corner, uh, of that courtyard. Um, so with that, I can either answer any questions you have, or I can turn it over to Ed Bradford to further review this with you and go over some of the architectural features.
Hold on. Kevin?
I'm, I'm looking at the plan. I'm just trying to figure out, how many of the tall trees are along the buffer between your property and Sawyer's Reach? I was going to try to count, but I figured you probably have that in front of you.
I'm going to add, but, um, yes. Let's see, we've got, uh, three, nine, uh, sixteen, uh, twenty, about twenty, I would call it twenty-seven to thirty of the evergreen trees. And there are three, three or four, depending on how you, where you want to look at it exactly located, but three to four shade trees are along there.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, Ed Bradford, uh, principal with TAT Architect on the project. Um, as Dave noted, I have a series of exhibits related to the architectural design. Um, the first group is related to questions that we heard at the last hearing relative to building height. We also received a request, um, post-hearing about providing some images, um, showing our proposed buildings in the context of the neighborhoods. We prepared a series of renderings to show that, and then as, also as Dave noted, a few more renderings, kind of getting a little bit closer to the building to show some of the proposed architectural detail, um, that we have proposed. Um, but before leaving this slide that Ben just talked through, um, as Ben noted, it was prepared primarily to focus on the quality, the duration of sunlight within the courtyard. Um, but it was also useful for us to, to make a, a determination, frankly, that, um, and I think you can see this in this exhibit, that there would be, um, no shadows from the proposed buildings cast onto existing Sawyer's Reach buildings or open spaces. And of course, that, that is primarily due to the location of the, um, conso buildings being located north of, of the existing Sawyer's Reach community. So, this first group of exhibits, again, are related to building height. So, um, this is a rendering that we showed at the last hearing, um, and we, we received quite a few questions about building height, so we wanted to walk through that a little bit more carefully. And, starting with the zoning definition for building height that I think we touched on last time, and our measurement, um, of height made according to that definition. So, as we noted, and as is, uh, noted in our drawing application, the building height measured according to the zoning bylaw definition of building height is, uh, a maximum of fifty-nine feet. Um, so this exhibit shows, because we had a lot of discussion about it, a, um, dashed blue line there that, that is right along the line, that is outlined in that definition for building height, that defines the, the uppermost limit of the roof beam. So, that is the topmost measurement of building height, again, as defined in the, in the building height definition in the bylaw. And that is measured from that height down to, if you will, to the mean grade. So, from that dashed line down to mean grade, we have a maximum height of fifty-nine feet. But then we talked about elements that are, in the architecture, that are above that line, above the line that's measured according to the, um, building height definition. And we have two that we talked a little bit about at the last hearing, and they're shown here. There is a low parapet wall that wraps pretty much the perimeter of each building. It's four feet higher than, than that uppermost roof beam. And that parapet wall is proposed for a couple reasons. Um, one for safety, um, for mechanical, uh, or, or maintenance personnel accessing mechanical equipment, and, and of course, for emergency personnel that might have to access the roof. We like to have that, uh, security about the perimeter of the roof. And it's also, um, to screen mechanical equipment. The mechanical equipment that we're proposing here is actually quite low, the individual systems, they're not larger central plants that are, have a lot of height. But still, and we'll demonstrate this in, in a, the renderings in a bit, when you pull away from the building, it is possible to see that equipment. So, that parapet wall serves that, serves that second purpose.
How high is that? Excuse me, how high is that?
Four feet above, above the, the base roof.
Thank you.
And then we have, uh, an additional parapet wall that shows here, it says top of slope parapet wall. That's eight feet above that base roof height. We talked about that one last time. That, of course, also serves the same function. It, of course, will screen, uh, equipment. It, of course, serves as a safety barrier at the perimeter of the, of the roof, but it has an additional function, and it's, it's purely architectural. Um, it's, it's important in the design, um, to us in the team, that we have some articulation to the roof shape, um, stronger roof silhouette, and the purpose of that, of course, is to break down the massing of the building. Um, so that is why that parapet rises up, it has a slope shape to it, um, it's for architecture reasons to provide a focal point, and it only occurs at the, at the ends and the corners of the buildings. In between that is that continuous lower parapet wall. So, there, there was a, a question about, a lot of discussion about the parapet wall at the last time, so we wanted to provide, uh, image, and that's this next one, that shows you what would happen if we pulled off that low, lower parapet wall. So, that's what this slide does, and if I kind of go back and forth, you can see the difference. So, this image takes that continuous, uh, four-foot parapet wall that provides the equipment screening and the safety at the perimeter of the building and removes it. And then again, even with this study, we still think some sort of articulation at the roof line is important. So, we removed the slope, but we did jump up that, that parapet at the end to get some variation in the roof line, but wanted to show for comparison what the building would look like if we, if we pulled off that higher, uh, parapet wall, both the one that's more continuous wrapping the building and the one at the end cap. And then this building section kind of dives into a little bit more detail. This is a building section that is included, again, in the application drawings, and it's just that, it's a, it's a cut section through a typical wing of the building. just that, it's a cut section through a typical wing of the building. So each of the floors is 10 foot eight in height, and that results, a pretty standard height for a building of this type, it results in a nine-foot ceiling within each of the dwelling units. You can see in the uppermost part that four-foot parapet wall, and then in the center of the roof, you can see that equipment. So again, lower equipment, you really need to be a long way away from the building to see it, but when you can get to that vantage point, that parapet wall serves that function of screening that lower equipment. The two dashed lines again show the points to which we're measuring building height according to the bylaw. So you can see on the lower part at the first floor line, excuse me, mean grade, and then up at the roof line, top of the roof beam, is the uppermost point we're measuring to. And then the mechanical equipment, the parapet walls, those are all items that are exempted in the zoning bylaw for the mixed-use overlay district, sorry, multifamily overlay district. And then I have a series of contextual views. We have three views from Plaza Way, starting here, and then progressively moving a little bit closer to the site. And then we have one inboard to the Sawyer's Reach neighborhood from their central green near the clubhouse. And each of these views is set up in a similar progression. The first view shows the existing condition, as this does, this is the view looking northwest from Plaza Way. The Mariners Way driveway is right here, so we're just before the Mariners, the most southern Mariners Way connection, and then 45 Plaza Way is just to the right here. But again, each of these views is set up with the same progression, showing the existing condition, and then we show the proposed building set into the same context. And then we have a third view to show, again, without the parapet, lower parapet walls. So existing condition from the same vantage point, here is the proposed condition. So now you can see, kind of terminating this vista at the end of Plaza Way is the proposed Similar to a lot of the items that I discussed in my presentation last week, it's not only the varied roof line that we're proposing to break down the massing of the building, but I think in this view, even from this distance, you can see the change in colors that serve to break down that mass. That's important, again, to break down the overall bulk of the building. And then, again, for the same view, we have the same perspective, but we pulled off the parapet wall from that. So difficult to see, but I can go back and forth here, and it's a little bit easier. So the end cap, slope parapet wall is cut down to a more regular line and a lower line at the ends, and then the parapet wall is removed. And again, this is about one of the only vantage points that you could get a peek at that mechanical equipment, but from this distance, we think it is possible to see that mechanical equipment, and you can see it here in this view. It is, I must say, preliminary as far as mechanical equipment goes, so there's various heights of stands and condensing units that could be proposed, and so this can be adjusted as well. So here is our second view. We have moved a little bit closer now. Now we're directly at the intersection of Mariners Way. You can see the clubhouse, existing clubhouse on the left, and now we're just a little bit past 45 Plaza Way, existing condition, and the proposed condition. So again, some of the same features are important, we think, material variation, the color variation. Of course, there's an important vertical break between the two buildings that is apparent here at the end of this access, and again, the roof variation from the higher parapet wall to the lower parapet wall. And then that same sequence, you can see the adjustment in the lower parapet wall and at the ends of the buildings, the slope parapet changed to the lower and more regular lower parapet. Certainly.
Between the lower and the higher parapet wall, if you were to take that higher one down, how far away do you have to be to be able to see that equipment on the roof?
If we took down...
And just made it all a four-foot parapet wall?
Well, I think this, here we are at Mariners Way, and we have removed the parapet wall, so this is where that equipment is visible.
Okay. And from Mariners Way to look at that equipment, can you tell me what it is? Without the average person, are they, is it really, really that important to put another four feet up in the air for visual? How many people are going to recognize the difference between a four-foot parapet wall and an eight-foot parapet wall? Just a question.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair.
Go ahead, Michael, Pete, one of you.
Okay, so when I was listening to you, okay, so the low one, if you add it to roughly the beam height, there's 59 feet, so the lower parapet's up at 63 feet.
That's right.
And then the upper ones at 67?
Yes.
Okay. So in that corner there, when you have the 67, is any of the equipment inside of that parapet? Because that's, it's almost like a box type thing, isn't it?
Yeah, that, yeah, so the mechanical system, as I noted, is, are there individual systems, they consist of an outdoor unit, which is a condensing unit.
Right.
One per unit. So there's a long run of them on the roof, and they stack above each of the units, and they're essentially sit on a two-foot stand, and then a 30-inch condensing unit sits on that. You see them in our own homes as well. There's just more of them up here. And they're going to stack above the unit, so as they progress along the roof scape, when you get out to that end, yeah, sure, there will be a handful of them out at that very end because there's units out there, not right out to the very tip of the building, but getting near it. So that parapet wall will serve to screen them, the lower parapet wall also serves to screen them.
Yeah, no, but I guess what I was asking, if you look at the rendering of the building, it almost looks like it's a square upper building, you know what I'm saying?
It doesn't need to be.
Well, I'm just curious, are you, is there equipment that's kept inside of that, in other words?
Yeah. The four-foot parapet wall does the work of screening the equipment. The extra height that we're proposing is really purely for architecture, to get a focal point at that end and to provide more variation. What we'd really like to avoid, if we can, is a constant monolithic roof line. We'd like some shape to the roof, but there's a balance there.
Yeah, I can see that. What I'm saying is, so basically those parapet, the higher parapet walls, if you look at the rendition here, it almost looks like there's a roof on top of it, there isn't.
No.
Oh, okay, so they're just open.
That's right.
To the roof.
Yeah.
Is there a cut sheet in any of this material that shows the units and their sizes and their heights and what they're, they always put on top of an anchor, okay, they're set on a box, and then they, and then the foam goes around or the padding goes around, and then the roof goes on, and then the rocks and all of that. And so that is usually about a foot high. And then how high is the unit itself? Because in order to even see the units, you've got to be a pretty good distance away, and by the time you're that far away, I don't really think that you can tell what they are. They're just another part of the mass of the building. And what I'm saying is, we have a height restriction, you're already, you know, really pushing the issue here, and then to add another for architectural, visual, no, it doesn't make any sense. You have to, or Pete might be able to see it when he flies over. Go ahead.
I might.
So.
Michael.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you made it clear the last time. I thought you had said the first time as well that the extra eight feet is more for architectural, something to do with the massing of the building.
It is.
From an architect's point of view, from my point of view, if you're, you know what, if you're already 63 feet in the air or whatever, it's massive no matter what you do. But my actual question was, the ground floor, how does that compare to, let's say, street level over there? Is ground floor down a little bit?
It's pretty close, yeah.
It's pretty close?
Yes.
Okay.
At the elevation of the roundabout is very close to our first floor elevation.
Okay, I was just thinking about it, because at Home Depot, we had a considerable adjustment to make, but it was depressed 20 feet, so it wasn't so obvious, so, I don't know, that eight footer there, that's a lot.
Go ahead.
Thanks.
Yeah, to you.
I have another question for you. So when you go to contextual views, is on looking from Sawyer's Reach on the public green, if you look at that one, it only, it only shows the building as being three floors.
Yeah, let me finish this last one, and then I'll get, I'm going to get to that one.
It's page 44, but I don't know if that's the same on yours.
So I have this series, and then I'm going to get to that one next. So this is the third of the four views. Still, this one is from Plaza Way, this is the closest view that we've taken. So here, we're very close to the northern Mariners Way driveway. So again, here is the proposed condition. This is again showing the break in the access to the courtyard between the two buildings. And then again, before, and an alternative that would lower that parapet height. And then the view that you were speaking of is this final.
That's the one I was talking about.
Final view in the series, so yes, this is a view, here we're sitting just north of the pool and just west of the existing clubhouse. So that shows One Mariners Way, just beyond, on the northern edge of the green, existing condition.
But that shows that it only is a three-story building.
This is a matter of perspective, so because the building is so much further from the Mariners Way building, it's primarily cut off from this vantage point. So this is again the view with the taller parapet walls, and then the view with it lowered.
Those buildings are already there, those are existing, those aren't proposed. Those aren't proposed, those are there, those buildings.
No, this is their building.
This is their building.
No, it's not, their building's behind it. Okay.
Oh, I see, so you're saying Sawyer's Reach building's between the two.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, because I'm looking at this, and it looks like your building on the other side of the green.
Yeah.
And I'm saying to myself, you've got a three-story building, are you kidding me?
I see, yes, I should have pointed this out. The upper left-hand corner is a key plan. So you can see the perspective, the location that the vantage point is taken from with the red dot. One Mariners Way is between that vantage point and our proposed building.
Yeah, so you're looking over Sawyer's Reach.
So just for clarity, can you just point out the top of where your proposed buildings are so everybody can understand?
Yeah, if I go before and after, you'll see it best. So here's the existing condition, and there's proposed condition. So from this vantage point, again, the existing building at One Mariners Way.
Right there.
Right there.
Yeah.
Cuts off the majority of the new building.
Tom?
Yeah, just to get back with the parapets, I would absolutely favor the parapets if I fully understood if it's going to screen the mechanicals, because screening the mechanicals are ugly, period, end of discussion. And so, and I'm not yet convinced that the, from some of the questions and the answers, if it's going to fully screen the mechanicals, I would be absolutely in favor of that proposal.
Yeah, the four-foot parapet wall will absolutely screen the mechanical equipment from all vantage points. When we remove the four-foot parapet, careful study, because this is very low equipment, it's possible we could get to the views, the mechanical wouldn't be visible from most vantage points. Only when you get quite far, as some of these montages do, will you be able to see the uppermost level of the equipment. But again, there's studies that we can do about the height of the stand, the height of the equipment, and because it is such low equipment, to the chair's point, it's either not visible, depending on your perspective, but when you really pull out, that's our concern. So that is why we propose the parapet, because it serves that 100% effectiveness of screening it from all vantage points.
So just to clarify, the four-foot is there to block the mechanicals, the eight-foot is more of a design element on the corners?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And as I noted, the lower parapet also provides safety at the roof edge, so even with it removed, we would be looking at some sort of safety rails or something, but those can be located a bit inboard too, to deal with concerns about visibility of those. So I have a few more slides here to finish off my presentation related to some of the details of the architecture. This is a view that we spent some time discussing at the last hearing and already again this evening. So again, view from the roundabout, some of the items that I've talked about, change in color with three colors, change in texture that I'll talk about in a moment, and a change in that roof line silhouette, all serve, rethink to break down the mass of the building. But at the last hearing, we didn't really get a chance to dive in and look a little bit closer at some of the details that we're proposing. So I have two more exhibits here, renderings to share with you. This first one is a view of the main entry, kind of shows our material palette and our detailing strategy. And this is a combination of materials and architectural strategy that we're proposing at each of the entries about the building, so each of the lobby entrances to the buildings, we're proposing this material palette. And it's a variety of materials that are shown here. The primary field is the beige color, that's defined as color A in this exhibit, but even within that, I want to point out that there's a change in texture, so that there is a six-inch exposure that's shown here between the sill and the head of the window, and then we changed to a tighter texture that happens in this horizontal run between the windows. So you're getting some kind of change in texture even within that field of beige clapboard. And then at the entries, we take even some more care in how we go about detailing and designing the architecture, because again, this is what we want to be, a pedestrian-friendly building, these are right at the entries to the building. So we go to this blue color to provide some accent and some contrast. Here, another change in the exposure, we go from four to six in the beige to a larger exposure of eight. You can see we've set off this entry feature from the face of the building to get a little more shadow and depth, and then the windows are set in with this darker trim accent. Each of the entries has this canopy associated with it as well. So again, it's all about creating a more pedestrian-friendly scale at these important entry features. And then finally, the, of course, the important ends of the buildings that we talked a little bit about at last time, and here primarily the siding that we're proposing is a light gray shingle in a six-inch exposure, and of course, that course, that's a texture that, you know, is of course widely throughout the local context here in coastal Massachusetts. So we chose it for that reason, the shingle. Again, in a six-inch exposure. And then at each of these end caps, we're also proposing two stacks of balconies. They're usually located in great spots with great views, so it'll be a wonderful amenity for the residents. And of course, it also provides a residential scale that is important to us. So again, we think it's this combination of colors, materials, textures, that provide a warmth and a residential character that we think is fitting for this neighborhood. That concludes my presentation. Happy to take further questions.
Any questions? We'll get to that.
Okay.
All set.
That concludes our presentation for tonight. We're happy to take any other questions from the board or from the public as you see fit, Mr. Chairman.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sure. That concludes our formal presentation for tonight. Happy to take further questions from the board or whatever you deem the next step to be, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Okay, I'm going to, at this point, I'm going to open this to public comment. We, because of the length of the case and everything, we are keeping it to a three-minute time limit, but please, come and speak and tell us what you think. Anybody would like to speak on this matter? Yes, please, sir. Come to the microphone and state your name, because it's being recorded.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Hartree, and I'm a resident at One Mariners Way, a three-story condominium building located adjacent to the proposed Avalon project. My question tonight relates to the proposed development's relationship to the existing adjoining sites and with the importance of mitigating the height and scale of the Avalon buildings to the existing adjoining and surrounding buildings. So with that in mind, does the board consider the proposed five-story Avalon building design to be compatible with, number one, with the existing three-story height of the adjacent Sawyer's Reach, One Mariners Way condominium building, and also, number two, with the existing four-story development patterns along Plaza Way that includes one of the Sawyer's Reach buildings at forty-five Plaza Way, the Hanover Apartments, the Marriott Fairfield Hotel, and the Cambria Hotel? Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Paul Blanchard, resident of Westwood Village, the abutte immediately to the west of this parcel. Also, the past president of the Westwood Village Association. And I apologize I came in late, the concern I would have, and I'm looking at the perspectives. I understand the concept and the height, but did they have any perspective from the west? Because adjoining to the west are all single-story buildings in Westwood Village. So the change is much more dramatic from our point of view than it is from the area of Mariners Way. We had sent in a letter that actually was similar to the letter that was sent for the Clermont development with our concerns about the property line and some sort of visual protection. We have had people wandering in from Colony Place across the field and into the development, and we've also suffered from dust during the construction of Sawyer's Reach. So we have the same kind of concerns with this as we did before, that we'd like to see fence along the property line as well as some trees to provide somewhat of a screen. Because from our point of view, the buildings are going to look a lot higher than they are from any other vantage point around the site. The other concern I have in looking at the site plan is that while this takes up three-quarters of the site, there is a section closest to us which contains some drainage areas and so forth, and it appears that that is to remain. But my concern is, is there any assurance or agreement here that this project would not expand at a later date into that portion that it comes right up against our property line? And I didn't know whether there was anything as far as a restriction or any kind of agreement in place that would provide some guarantee that that open area that contains the drainage and so forth and a small kind of pond area will remain as they are presently. So those were our concerns and our questions. I assume you have the letter that our current president had sent. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard Uncle. I'm a resident of One Mariners Way. I have quite a few concerns for the board to consider. One, with this new residential complex going in, will there be a need for a school bus stop? Where's the school bus going to pick up the kids to go to school? My next concern is that even though the architect and what have you have pointed out the fact that fire truck access around the perimeter, but how, if there's a fire or an emergency on the interior in the courtyard, how's a fire truck, how's the emergency personnel going to get in there and get somebody? You're talking five stories or maybe four stories. Do ladders go that high with the fire department? I don't know. I believe that's a concern that should be addressed. Another concern is the retention ponds in the back. How are they going to be protected during construction? We all know there's wildlife back there. The dog park's right there. How's that runoff going to affect the wildlife at the retention pond? The other thing since during construction, I know they had presented the fact that they're going to meet with the residents of Sawyer's Reach prior to construction to, you know, alleviate our concerns with them, so that'll be for another time. Another thing is with the rooftop. You're saying mechanical, they're saying the mechanical equipment's located in the center. The parapets protect the equipment. We all know, whoever knows the building, the mechanical code, that if the mechanical equipment's within ten feet of the edge, you have to have some kind of guards. I would think those four-foot parapits would serve that purpose. And the other final thing is that cancel thing that you can see from the view, from the green of Sawyer's Reach that's sticking up on the top. I think that's an eyesore that should be removed. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening, ZBA. My name's Steve Johnson. I'm one of the trustees from Sawyer's Reach. Dave was here last week, gave a nice presentation, asked, we asked a lot of questions, got a lot of answers. The concern that we have right now is the height. You know, I'm listening to what you guys are saying on the parapet. In our building, parapet's three and a half feet. We've got thirty condensers. They're doing the same thing on their roof, flat roof, four condensers per block of wood, all set up with springs so you get no movement. But the bottom line for us is that, we're talking almost sixty feet. And when you're pulling in from Walmart down that main road, that's going to be a monstrosity. Now, would I like to see a floor taken out? I would. But I'm hearing what you're saying on the parapet, the four and eight feet, that would make a big difference. Because I did ask David, they're not going down. They're going to start their pore basically right on the street level. So I was hoping maybe it would dig down a little bit. I don't see that happening. But, you know, for us, the height's a big difference for us. In that picture that they showed of Building One was taken down there to clubhouse at an angle up. So you can say what you want, but that, and I could see their building behind us, that was a different angle to take that picture at. So I'm just hoping you guys, I was on the ZBA for five years in Eastern, you got a job to do. I understand what council was saying with the forty B, but I'm just hoping that you listen to us residents. We're at over fifty-five. They're our neighbors. We're looking to be good neighbors. We're hoping that you guys can at least help us out a little. Thank you.
You ought to turn that on. Seeing that there is no other people in the audience that want to speak, I'm reluctantly going to close public comment and bring it back to the board. This is for, yes, he's part of the board, so. I'm not going to close you out, Jason. I'm just, I want everybody to know that everybody has spoke, and now we're going to go into the next portion of how this meeting is conducted. So, yes, Jason, please.
So, for the record, Jason Silva, Inspeccional Services, and I wanted to make comment on the parapet wall. In the International Building Code, a parapet wall is a requirement. There are six specific exceptions to allow it to not be in place. But in this case, I don't know that they fit, right? This is a concept design. So general designs include parapet walls for a number of reasons, screening, but also safety scenarios for firemen on top of roofs, as well as equipment repairs, et cetera. So generally, it's in the design. Sometimes they try to remove them when they can find the exact exception to remove them. I don't know that that's the case here. So there may be, just generally, a building code that requires the parapet wall, at least in very particular scenarios on this roof. And so just for discussion, I wanted to make that clear, that it has no way in effect for height. Height is irrespective. The parapet could be twenty-five feet off the ground if it's on a roof. It's a building code issue. The height issue is a zoning issue. Completely different issues, but I just want to make sure the board's clear that in the design, it may be there as a requirement of the building code.
And Jason, if I could ask, my recollection, and I've built a lot of parapet walls, was that it was forty-two inches was the minimum for fall protection, and that that was, am I wrong about that?
There is some requirements in the building code that talks to the design and construction of that parapet. I'm kind of shooting from the hip if I quote it. But the height of the parapet should be not less than thirty inches above the point where the roof surface and the wall intersect. And so, looks like thirty inches is a reference point. But again, designers are, the building code is the minimum requirements. It's not as though it's, you know, the standard. It's the minimum requirements. And so in this case, again, I think generally the design requires review of that installation or not, and it could be an important factor that drives the design of the construction of the building.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right, board members. Do you have any? Anything else you would like to?
I think just two clarifications. Ed can talk a little about parapet height, if you want to talk about parapet height.
Parapet height, I think is pretty much, well, go ahead.
Okay. I think, I just would like to say for the, I believe it is. So let me speak a little clearer, sorry. So we showed two alternates tonight to sort of foster this discussion with the board. So, you know, I think that I would say, we proposed one, we proposed an alternate, and it was to have this discussion. So we're open to that conversation, I guess would be my first point. The second point is, as it relates to the drainage parcel, I just want to make clear that we don't own or control that. That's not part of the premises of which we're requiring. So we're, that is staying with Clermont. We're just purchasing the sandlot, for lack of a better, for the lack of a better term, the nine acres that's shown on the plan. So I just wanted to clarify that for the group. And really, I think that's it. So I just wanted to clarify those two points. So, thank you.
Okay.
Let me ship questions for us.
So. Yeah, go right ahead. Ask a lot of them.
So with one of the residents there, I forget which, one of the first ones, was talking about, I think they were on the other, the abutters that are a little farther away, on the other side of the drainage basement. Is it possible to throw a few more trees in there at the top to cut down the air view? I think that's, one of you has brought that up, right?
I'd be happy to meet with the abutters there, on their property, and meet them and walk the property line. I think we just looked at on Google Earth, so it's not an exact measurement, but, you know, their property, because we're not developing the drainage basin parcel, and I think there were, there were conversations about that in the past, which I think prompted some of the comments in that letter. And we're two football fields away from their property. If you look at the, like, the length of the drainage parcel going across. But that said, you know, we want to be good neighbors to everyone who is close to us, so I'd be happy to meet with them separately. I'll give this gentleman my business card and happy to meet him and address any comments and discuss any concerns they have.
Because it wouldn't be much to throw. You've got one tree on, I don't know, this, I can't read the writing there. On, oh, the dog run, you got.
Yeah, by the dog run.
One there. I mean, but you're at the top, you could, if you put a couple more, it might help that situation.
I think we'd be open to adding trees along that property line if our landscape architect and our design team thought it really helped. You know, I think that, we just want to do things that we think really mitigate the concern. So if it'll help, and we can add a tree or two by our dog park to make it better for folks, I don't think that's a problem at all.
Anybody? Okay, I think at this point, I would like to get into these waivers.
Sure.
Because there is six pages of them, and I think there's some of them we need to talk about.
Sure.
So, let's start with Kevin. You have some questions?
Sure. Mine was related to the size of the parking, but I didn't know if you just want to go one by one through these or just sort of jump around, Mr. Chairman, however you want to do it.
I think, why don't we just start from the beginning?
Okay.
And go one by one. And. Which? We don't have to go through every one of these. Some of these are.
Yeah, they're just, they're just.
Because as I read, a lot of these are just given anyway. And I do want to talk about the parking. And I'm sure, I don't think there's a member on the board that doesn't want to talk about the parking.
Well, can I offer a suggestion, then? We can go through if, unless anyone has a comment, we'll just blow it down. I know, I think this was a town comment on section two oh three three on page B one about considering drought-resistant species, since it's a town comment. If you want to comment on that.
Sorry, I'm going to have to call on people from my team here to answer these specifically when they're area of expertise. So Ben, France from Hawk.
Yes. All of the species that we have proposed are drought-resistant, drought-tolerant. A large percentage of them are Massachusetts native species. There are others that are also on your recommended list of plants that we have, that we've also proposed. So those are all part of that list.
Great, thank you.
Next. Next. So let's handle the parking right now. Let's get to parking.
Yeah, let's go right to it.
Sure.
The other ones are gonna be pretty easy. So when you were here last time, I thought we pretty much explained that nine-foot parking places on the surface are not gonna work at all. And we, the other two large 40Bs that have been built so far have 10-foot parking places. We would not exempt them. The hospital, we would not exempt them. And it's not like you don't have room. You have plenty of room. So I can't understand why you would want over 100 nine-foot parking, to save 150 feet or so, 160 feet of asphalt? For the safety? It's our bylaw, and our bylaw was done by over 100 people, 135 people or something, sat. And this was vetted through a bunch of different committees, and it didn't happen in 30 minutes. It happened over a long period of time, this 10-foot parking law. And it's for safety. Because there's still a lot of very large vehicles on the road. Everyday vehicles. And so I for one will not support this project with nine-foot parking places. I just, I won't do it. So if you want to readjust that or whatever, then okay. But you're gonna lose me, so now we'll let the rest of the board talk to you about it.
I mean, Mr. Chair, I think, as you said, we've been very consistent throughout on this. We've never made as, especially with the hospital. So I think we're all pretty much in agreement on this one.
Tom? Tom?
Yeah, the nine-foot just isn't gonna fly.
Is the reason that there are many nine-foot spaces, were those in the garage?
Some of them are in the garage, and some of them are just regular surface spaces. And I'll let you finish your question before I can answer it.
Okay, so let's talk about the garage.
Yeah.
Did you have, did you design them at nine feet because you needed to put X amount of cars in there, or?
The surface spaces, or the garage. The garages or the surface spaces? The surface space, the garages? We can check the width of the garages. We'll check the width of the garages. As it relates to the surface spaces, we do have nine-foot wide surface spaces. Those are, I understand they're not complying with your bylaw, but they are standard for apartment communities. And what we, last time when we spoke, what I took away from the conversation was that it would be considered that we could have nine-foot faces if we had assigned parking. That was a comment from the board. So what we did was, we went through and allocated 10-foot wide spaces for larger trucks in locations where we thought trucks would want to park with the thought that we could assign spaces and have enough spaces to accommodate a variety of vehicles on our site and not just solve for, you know, the largest vehicle that we think is gonna show up. So that, we proposed that in our responses, that we would assign the parking spaces. There'd be resident stickers. And then people with the larger trucks would get spaces that were wider and in locations where they might be able to back in, you know, and other things of that.
I would just say that it's not necessarily trucks. It's full-size SUVs or whatever. But I do remember the comment about...
Assigned parking?
Yeah, assigned park, yeah, you may.
I was, I was the one that made the comment about assigned parking. And the comment was that we will, some, this board will sometimes approve nine-foot parking places if they're assigned in a place where there just isn't a lot of room. You missed that part of it.
Okay.
Okay? There is a lot of room there. So nine-foot parking places in those garages, I don't care.
Okay.
People, you know, get used to going in and out of their garages. And people get used to going in and out of different spaces. But nine-foot parking places on the surface, just, we don't allow them in the town. If there's any possible way to make them 10 feet, the only time we allow it is if there is no space. If it's downtown, if it's in North Plymouth, if it's places where there is a lot of congestion and the footprint doesn't allow it. But your footprint allows 10-foot parking places all through. The garages, okay, that's one thing. But surface parking, no. It's probably can't be.
I just would, just would comment that the chairman is correct in his assumption or his statement that we've kind of hard-lined that for a few years now. And we've had many others try it and try it. Some of us have little larger vehicles, and we know how horrible it is with a nine-foot space. I just, I too, the reason I asked about in the garage, I think if you have nine-foot spaces in the garage, I don't, I don't see any issue with that if they're in an assigned space. But outside, especially where you have the room, that's a problem for me.
The HAWK design, this one you presented, it shows both the outside parking spaces. I don't see the inside. Maybe I'm just, my glasses aren't right. But how many parking spaces are designed?
It's the little boxes.
Oh, I do see this.
There's only 40 individual stalls, and they're residential-style garages. They're not like a big parking.
But on the, on this, on the outside design, the one HAWK designed, SKL1, how many spots are there? There's no number shown here, and there's... How many, how many spaces are already designed on that, on that particular, this particular?
I believe it's 400, is it 485? Yeah, so in the, we sent in revised plans with the peer review response. It included this mix of nine and 10, which, you know, we're discussing. And what I would say is, on that plan, it's a total of 485 spaces. And a third of them were 10-foot wide spaces, and two-thirds were nine-foot wide spaces, roughly.
And where on this plan do you have additional space that you could put? Not obstructed parking, but indoor parking?
I think that if we were, we would have to lose parking spaces. So if we were going to give additional width to, from nine to 10, we would lose parking spaces within the field. We may be able to push and pull the extent of the asphalt a little bit. But I think that in general, based on our analysis, if we decided to do that, we would go down to fewer than 485 spaces.
Yeah, 'cause I had, originally at the other meeting there, I had figured that out. Yeah, it is. I had figured it out, and actually, it's, you would be down at... Hold on a second. So if you went to 10-foot spaces, you'd be down at 463, which is still over the 450. That would be changing, well, you already did change the 54 eight by eight and a half.
You got rid of all the eight and a half, yeah?
Yeah. So, but if you would originally change them, the regular 375 standards, made them from nine to 18. And also the 54, you would have a new total of 463 just by, you know, sheer math doing it. So I mean, you know, there's a little more give there. On the other side of the coin, I do understand that, you know, okay, so we have 300 units up there. Most people now have two cars for a family. So, or people, even though they're one-bedroom, husband and wife, I guess. So I mean, I almost don't want to go too low. But on the other side, it still would be above the minimum, you know, if you did go to the 10s.
We're trying to address that comment. I think when we spoke with some of the folks, sorry, as reach and so on, there were concerns about making sure we had enough parking. So I think that we're trying, we're trying to thread the needle here with this assignment. And I understand the board's point of view on that. But this is where we landed today. But I'm hearing comments that differ from what we're currently proposing.
No, and I guess as my comment to you is, I mean, because originally I had figured it out, and I said you could get to the 463. But then when I was looking at it more, I keep thinking, well, the problem is, is, you know, most people do, even if you have a one-bedroom apartment, it might be a husband and wife, they're gonna have two cars. So I mean, we do have to get ample parking. He's already at the property lines, as far as I can see it with this thing, proposal. Just an opinion, just, I think we might need, have to come to a compromise somewhere here.
Maybe the project is too big.
Well, we'll start down. But again, remember, they have, they do have exemptions for placement and density.
And I understand that. But placement and density has to also encompass parking in all other facilities. And if we can't get enough parking places on there, then maybe the building is too big.
Well, with you guys, yeah, whatever.
You know, that just, and I say that because I heard that comment from three different people. Maybe the building's too big. If you need all of those waivers, if you need all of that parking waiver, then maybe we gotta look at something a little smaller. So again, nine-foot spaces in the garages, fine. But on the surface, can't happen. Make it work.
I understand the comment.
Okay.
Anything else? What other waivers should we be talking about? Mr. Murray?
I would just suggest, I would just go through the list, see if there's anything else that the board's got any concerns with, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Go ahead, Kevin, whatever you want.
I think on 203-7, I think the new plans do show the ADA spaces. So we're okay there.
Seven, two?
That's on page B2. One, two, three, four down.
203-7-D.
I see.
I don't know if anyone wants to talk about the next one. The required setback and screening from the street layout line. I think we beat that one.
We can't weigh that usually. We do, yes.
The stall dimensions, we've just talked about. The last one on B2, grade should be shown on the plans. I think that's done on the revised plans. There was a question about parking obstructing a hydrant. I don't know if any, if that's been addressed or not in this comment from the town. That would be a fire department issue. I think we can defer to them. The height of the trees, we've discussed. I think the other three have been addressed in the agreement. Special part requirements. And then the last one, which is on B4, setback shown on the preliminary plans. I think that's been addressed in the new revised plans. And then regarding the bylaws, like fire protection. That's out of my purview. What's coming on that?
That the fire chief will have to weigh in on.
All local permits, mass DEP protection, stormwater requirements. Has that been confirmed? That was a comment from staff?
That was, that's, Beals and Thomas is working on it.
Yeah, okay.
We haven't seen...
Right, we haven't seen the...
Seen the return for Beals and...
We've seen Beals and Thomas, but we haven't seen the final response from them.
Right. They haven't done a close-out letter.
Right. So we're gonna have to wait for that anyway. And I think that was all I had. Can anybody else says anything?
Peter? Michael?
Yeah, as far as the signage, I didn't see any of the plans for...
And I'm going from memory here. I think that there were two signs on, there were two signs on the building. There were signs shown on the architecturals.
Right.
And then there was a sign right by our entry as it comes off the roundabout.
Right.
That was shown there.
But is there, is there a plan showing on separate than?
I believe they're shown on the, they're shown the full set of, the full-setted plans. Landscape and civil design plan should show them, and architectural, depending on the appropriate sort of discipline.
Yes.
I know. It's a big file, and it's a big project, so I understand that.
You have no idea.
No, I do.
We've, I've been on this for 21 years. Peter's been on it about 30. I mean, we've been here a long time, and we have always done everything with paper. All of a sudden, you see all these screens here?
I know.
It's all on there, and we don't know how to find it.
I still print it all out, so you don't have to tell me.
Thank God, our secretary, our boss,
Yes.
is, took the time to copy a lot of this stuff for us. So we're sitting here shuffling papers and trying to make these things work, and you're the victim.
I understand, I appreciate the time of the board, and I understand volunteer board, and people are doing their best.
Okay. So pretty much you've heard some of the board's opinions tonight. I don't know what you want to do, but I would suggest that you ask for a continuance.
Yeah, yes, continue to...
Okay. Jason, would you?
Jason, I saw.
Yes, go right ahead, Jason.
Just two comments, if I could, for the board to entertain. At my request, two items. The garages that are built, if the board could condition those to be residential garages only and not to be used for any contracting or anything except vehicles. Only thing to be placed in the garages is vehicles. And then secondly, electrical vehicle charging stations to be constructed are only to be used by residents, not ever to be used for others or turn into a charging station for anyone to use. Resident-only charging stations. Those are the only two things I'd add.
Anything else?
That's it.
No, no. I think two issues in my mind is, I don't like your eight-foot, whatever you call that.
Parapet?
Parapet.
Okay.
And, and I'm stuck on the parking as well. And it's unfortunate that maybe we weren't, we were all not clear enough last time because you might have looked at that a little bit differently.
That's my fault.
Well, I don't know, it's fault, but...
I didn't explain myself well enough, I guess. So you kind of understand what the board's looking for. Denise, a date?
We had discussed August 11th.
Can you have everything taken care of and put together by August 11th?
So as I understand it, it's another look at the parking. Just so I understand, what I have to get done by August 11th, right? It's, it's a review of the waiver, one more review of the waivers. And the, and comments about anything that came up in the decision is comments from town council. And then another look at the parking space widths. And clarification on the... And verification on the parapet wall heights.
And responses to our peer review.
So, I'm happy to reach out to Beals and Thomas. I typically town staff would get that from Beals and Thomas, but I've, you know, whatever the board would like me to do, I'm happy to do in that sense.
Yes. We still...
So, we need to hear from them.
Yes. No.
But we're still going to need to hear from them.
Yes, we... Absolutely. Okay. So, you understand what we need to have?
Yep.
And I think, in all fairness, you're trying to get this all done as quick as possible. So, what I'm going to do is await a motion from the board. Michael?
I motion that we continue case number... Which one is it now?
4168.
4168 till August 11th.
Second, Matt.
Peter. All right, we have a motion to continue this hearing. And by the way, folks, public comment is closed, so there will be no more opportunity for the public to really participate in this, but we wished you would come back and listen. So, I have a motion by Michael to move this to August the 11th at 6:00 p.m. and a second by Peter. All those in favor? All right, it is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Will you close? Can we have Carolyn? Yes. Can you hold on for a minute? Carolyn?
Yes.
Question for you, Carolyn. On the agreement, the final one for the comprehensive permit. I noticed in... On Page 6, you had permanently remain affordable units in perpetuity, but you crossed out permanently. Why is that?
That's in the MOA, did you say?
Yes.
What was the page again?
Page 6. About halfway down...
I believe he's talking about the decision.
Number 11.
Draft decision.
Oh, and the draft decision. Oh, sorry, I thought you meant the MOA. I... If that... So, did I draft... Did I cross out permanent but put in perpetuity?
Yes.
Yeah.
I like perpetuity because that is what the regulations use, that affordable units are to remain affordable in perpetuity. So, I realize that some people might think that that's just a distinction without a difference to say permanent versus perpetuity, but perpetuity is usually the term we use in 40B.
Yeah, but like these... The units still go into the housing trust?
Absolutely, yes. Yep.
And so, and as I understand the housing trust, they're in the in-perpetuity period. That's it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Carolyn, if you like that word, we love it.
We use that word.
No, not a problem. I was just curious.
Okay. Have you anything else, Carolyn? That you would like to add?
The only thing, when you were going through the waivers, you know, there was the one on respect to the general bylaws and the fire lane, and I know we did have the sweat path analysis. So, I don't know if perhaps... Have we got something from the fire chief going through those other elements of that provision of the bylaw to confirm whether there are any other issues or is the fire chief essentially saying he's designating the entire perimeter to be a fire lane and that is...
So, what we need to do is get the good updated plan and have the fire chief sit down, look at it.
Or update his memo. I think there... I do recall seeing a memo earlier from the fire chief. I just don't know if he went through every... I don't know if it was before the sweat path analysis.
Okay. You got that?
Yes.
All right, good. Jason, you have anything else you would like to see? Okay, we have...
Can I ask one more?
Yes.
Another one, Carolyn. So, if we go to this agreement sign, is there room in there to put a condition at the end that anything that staff or, you know, department-wise isn't satisfied, they'd have to come back here to iron it out or what?
Well, I want to be clear that that is very much a preliminary draft decision, so there is still plenty of time to finesse that or add additional conditions. If there are certain things that, you know, sometimes at this preliminary stage of the design, there might be a need for DPW, for example, to finally... To review the final construction plans and review and approve. And we normally add some language in to make sure that it goes through the DPW approval process, complies with, say, any of their regulations, for example, and that that approval shall not be unreasonably withheld because this board ultimately, you know, grants the permit. We can't have a department head essentially veto some subsidiary portion of the permit. But to answer your question, yes, we can put some further conditions in there about anything that we need to, to make sure that if it hasn't been addressed at this stage and we still need further review of more detailed plans by, say, a department or even Beals and Thomas, that that can be built in prior to, say, issuance of a building permit, for example, or even reporting back to this board if you want to see a further report before work begins.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. We already voted that. I think that I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second?
All those in favor? Good night.